May bow heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us this opportunity this afternoon together here today. Father, I ask that you grant us the blessings of safety, health, guidance and knowledge, and especially peace. Father, I would like for you to continue to keep your arms of protection around our first responders, city council, our mayor, citizens of Scottsboro, and God, please bless the United States of America. I say this in the Father's name, we pray, amen.
Amen. For the unity to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on imagination, on merit, God, and individual delivery to the end of its world.
First thing over the work session is discuss invoices for the Heritage Center addition. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, appreciate it. There are two invoices from KPS, invoice number eight and number nine. Invoice number eight kind of got lost in the shuffle last fall, and that's in the amount of $527. And KPS invoice number nine, which is early December, in the amount of $3,822.83. So this is for, they're protecting in this phase, this last phase, the construction phase. And there are about 50% of the project, about 50%, so they're billing for this amount of doing up to about 50% of that last phase. That's on invoice number nine, and you'll see construction administration. There was five, one, two, three, there's four line items where there's dollar amounts, and construction administration is their construction, well, administration during the construction phase, and they're up to 84%. So the combined total of these is a little over $4,000. So that's the architect fee for the building. Any questions on that? Okay, the next one is toller application number four. This is a one for $27,900. This is through the end of December. The total progress you might be able to see on page two is about 53%. So there are line items that make up the description of work on the pay application, and those have all been viewed by myself and by the architect and signed off by all of us. And so we're requesting payment of that amount to toller construction. Let me add back on the KPS part, that is actually 50% because the Heritage Center is paying 50%. So I'm requesting to pay 50% of the amount shown on here, and I think they've been bringing the check to the City Hall, is that right, Whitney? For half the amount, and then that gets sent in with the check to KPS by the city.
About $263.64 on one, $1,911.32 on the other.
Correct. The toller contract is pulling out. We're still under the $500,000, well, under it, but we'll be getting close to that in the next month or two.
Anybody have questions? General, are you there? Can you kind of give us an update on the project?
The sheetrock finishing is finished. They actually put the first coat of paint on the exhibit hull. And you can go in, there's a block up on the top of the door, but it's not blocked, just rotate it and you can go in. So we're hoping to go in and see it. And so they're, they'll be finished painting maybe this week. The brickwork is a little slow because, you know, when the weather turns good, then there's all these other jobs that these contractors are going on, and so they're having a difficulty getting the brickwork underway. They've done a little bit of it, but they're waiting on some materials too. Some cast stone lintels that go over the windows, you know, and under the windows. Again, because of COVID and the distribution system and the manufacturing, these things are hard to get, and so they're beginning to be slowing down the project a little bit. But other than that, it's coming along well. Tollers Construction, their site superintendent's doing a good job, they're really looking out for us, and I'm over there quite often talking with him and looking and seeing. So very pleased with that, that work. Anything else?
Anybody else have any question? Thank you, Mr. Williams. We'll put all three of these on next week's meeting. Number two is discussed requests of vacate portion of Moody Ridge Road. Mr. Paul? I know we went over this in the last work session.
Yeah, I was looking around, I was expecting Mr. Russo to be here, but he did some additional legwork, but I think the, as I understood, it was passed to give some further, more deliberate follow-in to allow the council members maybe to look into it further, including an onsite review if they so chose.
Looking at the map, I've been down there a couple times where the proposed road is. There's a house that sits right there. How close is this road from me to the house? Has anybody talked to them before?
Well, now, are you talking about the immediate, the very first house past the parking lot?
Right here with this green.
That's the maples owned, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that maple, that's the old Maples Clinic.
Okay.
They own that, and that, that structure is going to be moved.
Okay.
The next adjoining land owner is Don Croft, he owns to the road and to Moody Ridge, and of course, we've spoken with him, and he has no, no concerns whatsoever. I might add too, that since it came up again, a question probably from Steve about the utilities, we have spoken specifically with Wolfshire Gas, and their position is, they're happy with it, they have no problem as long as the part that is abandoned, the section of Moody Ridge that's abandoned, that they are granted an easement, obviously, for any lines that pass under that section. And again, also veto net and reviewed with Philip Cheney, exactly how the power poles would be changed, and Philip actually drew in, no problem, we'll move this pole and put anyone here, so as far as those type of things, it doesn't seem to be an issue.
And Philip was good with taking care of that, or is that something they're going to take care of?
Yes, that's right, and veto might address that. They're asking me about the power board's position as far as the responsibility for, I guess, the cost of moving that pole, which I.
Yeah, yeah, Philip said it'd be a very reasonable cost, and I told him we would pay for it, so I'm not worried. It'd be just a couple thousand dollars.
There was one question that came up last time.
No, I apologize, I'm so sorry.
But I can't remember, will the state require a turn lane? Josh?
State asked if there would be acceleration to acceleration lane. My understanding is not, and if you, you know, that was an informal discussion, but again, as I related to you, the right-of-way specialist that is in our county office sent it to Gunsville for any comments or concerns or questions, and we haven't heard back from them at all.
Josh, do you?
I haven't got confirmation from ALDOT plant, and my girl said they'll send it, once you submit it locally, they'll submit it up, and they'll have the final comment or say whether we would require turn lanes.
Yeah, Josh, if a turn lane is needed, who will be the payer?
Well, everything will have to go through the city. The Maples can't enter into agreement with ALDOT to realign Moody Ridge Road, so everything would have to go through the city as far as anything with the realignment to that state route. So it would have to work out.
Well, as we stated before, I've been up there and looked at this a few times, and I think this would be an asset to the city that's, it's a dangerous way to pull out the way it is right now. You've got to turn around, look behind, you can get back out into the street, and this would be an asset for our biggest employer here in town too. And they're going to be putting more people on this parking lot, they need space.
Are there going to be net increased jobs in the city?
Not in the city, the city will be about the same amount.
So you've been moving employees from one plant to another.
Plant three to plant one.
So you were not qualified for any grants that you're on because there are no new jobs created.
Correct, I spoke to Jimmy Green today, and we are still looking to add another 80 employees, so we're going to see if we can do something with those.
It would be difficult to speak with the industrial development board on that aspect too, to check into any kind of site grant lanes for any jobs. I think there could be some grant lanes out there. Have you done any estimates as to how much the cost would be just for the road itself?
Well, our maintenance, head of maintenance did, and he thought it would be about $50,000 if we were doing it.
Mr. Luke, can you comment on that?
You work with roads a lot more.
I haven't done a cost estimate on it, or, you know, part of a takeoff to do an estimate, and it varies, of course, how wide it's going to be if you go have, you know, a right-hand turn lane out or a middle turn lane to the left, you know, it varies some where the cost would be. Fifty may be in the ballpark, it may be 75, it could be 100 according to the variables they do.
Well, is it my understanding that Maples is going to flip the cost on the road?
Well, yes, if it's in that 50 range, definitely. If it's more than that, I don't have permission to do more than that.
And Josh, you were involved in that first meeting, you had to have some discussion about surveying and some engineering calls?
Right, you'd have to get a surveyor to survey that and, you know, do the quick hand-deads and the deep work. So you'd have to get a surveyor involved and an engineer involved to actually do the design of it to submit to ALDOT. Because ALDOT, they won't go off the sketch, you know, you'll have to have some more detail raw and show them what you've got and what you're doing there to get that agreement set in place.
So before we can really do anything, that needs to be done.
Well, that'd be getting it started correct. I think y'all could act on it to approve the concept, and then the concept would be besides, you know, put in the play to submit to ALDOT an agreement.
That's sort of the dilemma we're in, we went to, and they said, let's kind of go through the city, so we're not asking for some blanket, you know, approval for all these unknowns.
What we're looking at those, you know, I understand you're saying, yes, you have 30 to 50,000. What if it is 100,000? Then what?
We should have an estimate before we start, shouldn't we?
Well, that's, that's what we need to know.
Meanwhile, we'll pay, we'll pay the front server. Just so you won't be out of the pocket until we know how much it will be in total.
So look at number three, invoice, to get them started.
Having surveyed is the first step. I think it would probably behoove the city, and when they've done some estimate work, it would also behoove the city, I think, to have Josh do an estimate too, and then coordinate with Maples and bring us back a final document on cost and on the exact properties that will be conveyed. I know that Mr. Park now, that absolutely no problem at all, getting together to get the deeds done and accepted, back and forth between the two entities. Current line way to reconvey it to Maples, computing various city entities like, you know, the power board, Wolfshire Gas Board, rights of way to get on the lines that get back there, I think would also be an understanding that the structures would be built on top of the lines and such, but that's pretty easy to do, at least for lawyers to do, like themselves. And once we have the survey, once we have the estimate, we do a concept, send it off to Montgomery via ALDOT, move forward, simulate approval.
Right. With or without modifications.
Right.
So we can, can we go forward with the surveying right now, or do we need to wait till this is back from Montgomery?
I think it would be time efficient, and everyone's best interested, Maples could go ahead and get started with the survey.
Saying that, what do you need from us?
From us to get your survey started?
Probably should get understanding that the city will approve it, you know, through the council, that way there won't be waste.
Yeah, again, that's the sort of catch 22, is we do all this, come to get you better prepared, and y'all say, you lost your minds.
Without taking a vote up here, because we can't, you know, this is a work session. I believe we agreed that it is an improvement, it's just that, you know, we can't vote on it and say, yes, and it runs 100,000 instead of 50,000, and the city stuck with a $50,000 deal.
And conversely, as veto said, we don't want, Maples doesn't want to commit to an unknown number and, you know, because there might be some cost sharing opportunities there.
So saying that, can y'all look at this, and then we'll have a work session on the 25th again, and come back to that one, and see where we're at for, we're all agreeing on that. Anybody else have any questions or anything else?
Before any conveyance can be made, one way or the other, there's going to have a survey.
Yeah, that's right.
We could make a motion at the next meeting to go forward with survey, if the city expands.
I think Mr. Russo just indicated Maples would handle it as a sign of good faith and show us their willingness to disvote. And at the same time, as I said, I think it'd be good for Josh to do an estimate too, because the more estimates you have, the better off you are, and we are. Let's see.
I would like Josh to order the survey, this way we get what's needed, we'll pay for it, but.
That's what I was thinking, I think the meeting, the meeting that Mike and Josh and Mayor and I had, we agreed to run the survey and engineer through the city, because we have to, but they would take it.
No problem.
Then why don't you put that on next week? Put that on it, or?
I think they could commit it.
It's true.
I do.
Then we're going to put this on the 25th, come back after. We should maybe have some information about the survey then. If you don't, let us know.
We'll let you know.
Thank y'all, thank y'all, thank you. All right, we'll move on to number three. Discuss the High Country sales tax in Sydney. There's somebody here from High Country. So, Mr. Wheeler, I guess I'll call on you, because you have the numbers I'm. As far as what they're asking for and what we've done in the past, this might be some things we need to look at. I'm looking over the numbers, and they were asking for up to 58 year, I think that's right, up to 10 years on just new car sales. They were asking for the 75% to get up to 50. And we at the city have never really been more than 50.
50%.
And so.
Normally it's been a 50-50 split with the property owner. Couple of questions that I had, and I discussed with Mr. Fady. I'm not sure, and Mr. Cameron, you can chime in, I'm not sure what their base level is. I did a five-year study of the sales taxes and the sales that they had had down there, and I know where our baseline is as to what they've done over the past five years, but I'm not sure what in the contract that it says would be the baseline that they would be looking at. Second thing is, the way we collect sales tax, we collect it for the month of, say, November, it's paid in the month of December. We don't get that information until, you know, first of January. So I believe in the contract, it was asking for 30 days payment after the end of the close of the court. That's not really possible for us to do it, you know, it's kind of impossible for us to have numbers before they're actually due to us. And the other thing was, they were asking for 75% of the amount above the baseline in sales tax up to an amount of $50,000. $50,000 is what we've done with the other people that we've had these agreements with, but we've not done anything as far as 75% or even close to it, if it is the amount that we've done on the other projects that we're hearing the city.
Mr. Parker, if I may. So your recommendation would be to take an offer back to the air council, change the 75 above the baseline to 50, up to 50 per year. If we extend the 30 days payment, 40 to 60.
Say 50.
Say 60. And come up with a firm number to establish as the baseline.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was going to suggest you and Mr. Cameron get together this week, but it sounds like you guys are here. Okay. All right, saying all that, anybody have any questions for Mr. Wheeler on this, or Mr. Cameron, either one? If not, let's move back to the work session on the 25th also, that you'd be counting to get back to that and negotiate this. Thank you. Number four, discuss the Alabama College Bass Nation tournament agreement. Mayor, you got any information on that?
Other than what's in your folder, this is, this follows the Bassmaster Elite, same weekend, follows up with that. I believe it's 6500.
Mr. Mayor, is this the one that we were going to share the cost with?
No, no, this is a different, you know, this is a different one.
6500 on it, is there any extras like rings or eyes and all that stuff added to, like some of the bigger tournaments?
There would be some unofficial rooms, a lot fewer than with the Bassmaster Elite. Changer is going to pick out those for the Bassmaster Elite, so these would be extra to that.
Five rings?
Yeah.
This falls right after the big time.
It does, I think this one is Saturday and Sunday, but then the late finishes, I think, on Saturday, and this starts on Saturday and Sunday.
And this can come out of our tourism fund. Anybody have any questions? Then we'll put that on next week's meeting. I've discussed requests for a state audit. I know, Ms. Oliver, I don't know if you want to speak on it first, or, or Mayor, he did some research.
Come in here.
Okay.
I spoke with Barry Crowe with Alabama Elite Municipalities last week, and he stated that the state is required by law to do audits on counties and agencies, no, he's not municipalities. He said that the council could request a forensic audit of the city, the senior level department, Alabama Department of Public Intelligence. He said it's, there's only one or two cases he knows that's happened, it would have to be more specific. He also indicated that because they cover counties or they're part of counties and agencies, as he put it, it may be 12 to 24 months before you can say, because of their staffing workload. As far as the cost, it's hard to come up with a cost, not knowing specifically what would be, what they would be looking at. The forensic audits are apparently in-depth and pretty specific.
I am still working on some things, if you don't mind, asking some more questions, so if we can, if I can get with the.
We'll put this on the next work session.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move that to the next work session on 25th. We'll go ahead and move to number six, we'll discuss the budget amendment for repair of Solid Waste Department. Mr. Lethbro. Oh, he hasn't taken that. You want to read over this?
This one that I have is for to repair of 725C for $9,000.
Up to $9,000 to repair the 725C. The others for the tires and. Sorry, Mr. Lethbro, I had to take the guys from CDG back to the airport, and so, he's going to get his information he sent me today, pulled up here. The 725 is the dump truck, it's also, we got to repair two of the tires on it, and that will be $6,039.80, this truck's down, this stuff, these repairs.
These would be repairs that's in the budget though, wouldn't it?
Mr. Wheeler? I think these would be outside of the budget already.
I actually suggested that he do this, because with it being as much as it is, $15,000, that's not something that would be a normal repair to his equipment that we would have included in the budget, so, and I asked him to come before you and have him request that you did this, that we wouldn't just kill our budget, or his budget, with a $15,000 repair to our office, so.
This is something we could take out of excess sales tax. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, I'll put this on next week's meeting. I heard one of those. There are no delegations tonight, so we'll go straight to report. Did I skip one? Oh, I'm sure you did. I'm sorry, I wrote this down. Number seven, discuss the property appraisal and environmental study for property adjacent to the airport. Mayor, you got the information on this?
Yeah, and Mr. Wade is here tonight too. There's some property adjacent to property that currently belongs to the city and the airport, and it's in the estate of Ophus Steel. We were contacted with interest, and I think the airport had looked at it before. It would require an appraisal and environmental audit to be done. Mr. Wing, you can add. With wings, you can add, it's a five acre plot at the end of Howard Street.
Yes, property we've looked at, you know, in the past, and never had opportunity to get it, and it's kind of available in this estate. And Mr. Porter, you know, I haven't talked with him yet to see how much it is or anything, but we can't do anything to get an appraisal in the environmental. I checked with the bars who visit our engineers for the airport, and they think that the appraisal and the geological would run somewhere around eighty-five hundred dollars, which would have to be paid upfront before, you know, anything else. And then, if we buy the property and the FAA approves it, the purchase of the property, they're paying ninety percent of the cost. But, I mean, it has to meet the FAA appraisal's amount. So, you know, they really, like a couple of things y'all said a while ago, if you don't have the appraisal and you don't have the geological, you can't go forward with making the offer to buy the property. And I think it's a wise investment, because it's five acres, it joins the airport. We can't grow, you know, north of the airport because of the railroad track. We're growing leaps and bounds to the south, and we're eating that property, serve on the Economic Development Board, and also serve on the Alabama Aviation Council Board. And there's a lot of stuff going on in Huntsville Airport, it's going to be an overflow, same way with Madison, and we're trying to stay one step ahead of the ballgame here to be able to have enough property to move things around that would let us be able to maybe go after some aviation contracts in our city. And we have been in negotiations with them, Sheila, myself, Nathan, and two, three others, and we're getting close, and then all of a sudden election comes up. So, you know, I didn't tell you one hundred percent that would happen, but I'm telling you, if we don't stay ahead of the game, it won't happen. We've just closed out two and a half million dollars worth of projects in 2020, which is just unheard of for an airport our size. And some of those monies that we got from the federal government was no magic funds. A million forty-five thousand to redo the apron, we didn't have to put up a dime. Most everything we do with federal government is ninety-ten, buy from the city and buy from the state. And we just, Dr. Iger said of the DOT for the aviation department, just retired, we're also real good friends with Frank Farmer, and we keep him abreast of everything we're doing. This is just one more step in the process that we're trying to get done to keep our airports, there's seventy airports in the state of Alabama that's general aviation, four or five are big airports, the city of general aviation. We're either ahead of them or right, we're in the top five out of the seventy that have been getting funded. Reason why, we stay accurate, you know. We go to Washington once or twice a year, Mike's gone with us, you know, got some new faces on the city council now, maybe some more will go where we go. But those things puts us in an advantage when we go face to face. And we just, like I say, if we don't do these things, we're not going to be ready to do it. And these would be high-paying jobs, seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year, it could be fifty to a hundred jobs. It's something, like I say, that the economic development's working with us on it. Talked with Rick Tucker, who's ahead of the Huntsville Airport on how busy they're getting, him not saying that we would get anything, but if you see what's going on, you say, well, these things have got to go somewhere, you know. So we just put a new lighting system in, our runway lights are eight million dollars, and they're beautiful from there. If any of you want to look at nights, they might be glad to take you, I took some pictures of them and posted it. Like I said, we just done that million forty-five thousand. We've done a three hundred and eleven thousand dollar drainage job, just completed it. All these things are wrapped in a, to go along with other things that we've done. We've probably done seven, seven and a half million dollars worth of work on that airport in the past ten, twelve years, and it just keeps going. But, I mean, your airport's about nine or ten acres out there, it's no easy job keeping up what all's out there, you got to keep it up and you go on, try to do some more. But it all, everything we've done makes FAA approval that puts us in line to go after grants. We haven't been turned down a minute we've turned in. And they love for you to buy adjoining properties to your airports. So we would, if we get this geological survey done, we get the appraisal, and then Porter or whoever's handling that goes to the state and they accept the offer, which always does what it appraises for, where then we can purchase that property, you'll get reimbursed back for that cost of doing the survey and the appraisal, the geological appraisal. And only if we purchase it, it'll be on top of the ninety percent.
And one thing that's important is, this is property, again, that is already adjacent to property that the airport, the city already own, this is not, it's actually not at the end of the runway.
We're the old dog plant, you should, Doug Roundhouse has a house over there. There's an old abandoned house on this place property, you know.
Rutter, it's if your recommendations, the mayor and council, a member of the airport advisory board, does the city advance up to eighty-five hundred dollars for environmental and surveys?
I definitely do.
Do you think eighty-five is going to be enough?
No, no, for sure, I just got into, when I first talked with the mayor about it, I said, we'll get that done for four, five thousand dollars. Well, when I called the engineer and we went over it, it's property that we had talked about in the past, but it never came to bite, so it was, it was in his head and in his fingers of what it would cost. He said, Rutter, I think somewhere around eight thousand, eighty-five hundred dollars, plus a little more than I thought, you know, and he said, well, times is, you know, it's, things have gone up, and, but it's immature what it costs if we buy the property, it's not if we don't buy it.
But what if we say up to ten thousand, to make sure there's enough to cover the appraisal and survey?
We just don't want the engineer to get enough. I come out a long way.
Yes, and we hope so, that's what's happening.
Because they spent all gas station bill on it, and there's been, you know, nothing out there that should come up with any, you know, they'll drill some holes and they'll send off tests, that'd be about it, you know. But it's definitely my recommendation that we should do that to see if we can buy it, to have that in our locker, so when we're running out of space, and not only that, are we running out of spaces, it would run into the parallel taxiway. We've got most of the parallel taxiway done, but that would be more that we would have to buy later on to do that. So it's just, if you're planning on growing, and you're planning on adding jobs, and you're planning on making our airport more safer and better, then this is a thing I would do. And if we're not, you know, then we shouldn't have done, follow what we've already done.
Just like tonight, you know, this guy's from CDG over here, back at the airport right now, going back. And when these people come in, I'm...
Well, I had took a little trip, they flew out and flew back in, and there was two planes come in when I come in. I mean, it's just, you know, we got a good traffic base already here, we got planes stationed in probably twenty-five hangars, you know, and these properties that we're buying, that, and it's, some of the jobs that we're looking at, will cost us to have to move some hangars, and we got to have properties that we can move these hangars to, you know, and properties that we can build on. And therefore, if we can plan one of these contracts, you know, it's going, whether it be in avionics or airframe or engines, which we already got an engine shop out there now, that works on our planes' engines, and they're, they went from two people when I got to go in there, to four now. So things are moving in the right direction, we just got to stay ahead of it.
So the recommendation would be up to ten thousand dollars for this.
If it were for some reason, if it were for some reason to me, for the neck, we could come back and vote.
We'll put that on next week's meeting. Thank you. Now, there are no obligations tonight, so we'll go to reports. Mayor?
The only thing I've got tonight, and this is based on clarification we got just before the meeting tonight, the RecCom Director, I'm going to appoint Mr. Tom Bradford as temporary chairman of director of Scottsburg. Through, at least, May the first.
With you saying that, Ms. Yopple, her retirement date is...
May the first.
May the first, and then you'll, we'll come back with a point after that. All right, thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Wish everybody a happy new year, and I don't have anything else.
Mr. Dahl?
I'm ready, what Mr. Dahl said, happy new year, and everybody do this.
Mr. Dahl?
How do I be thanking? No, just say thank you everyone for coming tonight, and I hope you all had a good holiday season, and get through the winter, and see us spring coming.
Thank you. I don't have anything, appreciate y'all coming. We are here.